Good evening. It's Monday, July 16, 2018. It's 6:00 PM in the Harvey Room. This meeting may be recorded live. Ms. Hames, you please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano, Mr. Matucci, Ms. Powell, President, Ms. Swope, President, Mr. Vecchione, Mr. Perrin, Mr. Capabianco.
Here. Mr. Matucci, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask Governor Rameen, standing for a moment of silence, in memory of Valerie Wilig Blank, a cafeteria worker who retired in 2014 with 13 years of service, and John Bucky Donahue, a custodian who retired in 2012 with eight years of service. Thank you. Any public comment? Delegates and visitors?
So delegates and visitors, I'm wondering if these guys are on, are they on your agenda as stepping up to talk about their field trip? And if they are, then we can take them out of the water.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is that what your plan is, to stand up and talk about the field trip? Okay, so I'm gonna let you guys do that. You don't have to stand. You can come up to this table if you want, just so that they can hear you. No moral support from the back.
Should I stand or sit?
You can sit there. Whatever you feel more comfortable.
Dear school committee members, the 2018-2019 cross-country team would like to attend an out-of-state cross-country meet next season. This event takes place between October 5th and 6th in Orlando, Florida. The meet takes place inside of Disney's ESPN Worldwide World of Sports. Our team would be staying at either Disney's Pop Century Resort or Disney's Caribbean Beach Resort for that Friday, 10:05 until Sunday, 10:07. The meet is a basic cross-country 5K race through the ESPN complex. After the meet, the team would go to two of Disney's five main parks to bond together as a team while they spend their time together. This trip would be paid for by each athlete who was able to attend. A two-night stay and two-day park tickets would cost around $250 to $300 per athlete. Additional costs would include airfare for traveling to Florida and food. There's a $200 team fee per team, a $400 total for us since it's a boy and girl scene combined, and we plan to fundraise in order to offset some of these costs. And more information can be found at like a website here that I can leave for you guys if you want. And that's it.
Can I ask you again about the money? So each individual would be paying $300 and then they would pay their airfare, which is another...
I think the airfare is included in the 250 or 300? It's not? Okay, so it'd be that plus the airfare.
And then the other additional costs. In other words, how about how much is it going to cost each student to go before fundraising?
So before fundraising, it'd be 300 plus the flight, so would that be probably what around?
About three or four hundred.
Three, four hundred. And then the fee, we, the fundraising isn't going to be mostly for the fee, so we can get rid of the $400 team fee, so that we won't have to give you that. So people will just be paying for their ticket and for the cost per athlete.
So they'd be paying about five or six hundred?
Yeah, five, six hundred.
To go. And how many students participate, do you think?
We have about 20, 25 kids on the team, and we have probably about 10 to 15 like definite yeses right now.
Just a quick thought. There's been some other fundraising activities that some of the other teams have done, and it's not, they're not GoFundMe pages, but they're similar where athletes, it's not through the school, it's a separate organization where teams will put out a request to friends and families to donate on their behalf. And it can be individual student or it can be team donations. So I'm not sure if the coach is interested in doing that, but it's something that's been done through a couple of our other coaches this year. And we did check it out to see if it was legal, if it was a, you know, technical effort that any other school systems were doing. And we did find several school systems across the Commonwealth that were utilizing that way of fundraising versus trying to sell Yankee candles for the 50th anniversary of school year, and your grandparents or your aunts or uncles. This is more of a direct deposit to support your local individual athlete. So I'm sure that's something that Coach will...
Mr. Mack mentioned that something like that.
So you're looking tonight for, you're asking for the school committee's support and approval for you to attend that trip? Is that what they're asking?
Can I abstain for a moment?
Right.
Have the, has the team been able to do anything like this before?
Mr. Mack mentioned that he's done something similar like this before. I, it was early 2000s, I think.
We did it. We went up to the mile in Greece. It is a Greek, it's a team bonding field trip. It brings us all together, you know, outside of our, our area here. It's a great opportunity. And I will speak on that because we did it in 2007 or '06.
If I may, $500 to $600 for an optional field trip to Disney World seems completely reasonable to me. Seems like a good request. Happy to support. I'd like to make a donation if you guys have a fundraiser. So I'd like to take this out of order. I'd like to make a motion to support the WHS cross-country out of state travel request. Second by Ms. Swope, do we have any comments?
Just as far as policy as with on the chaperones.
Yep.
Got to make sure we have enough.
Correct, proper. So I would approve it based on, suggest it based on proper following policies and also proper supervision as well as whether it needs to be this CPR health certified, however that needs to be in the policy. I don't want to talk about that. So I want that they follow those procedures.
So based on...
I will abstain from this vote because my daughter's on cross-country and I may be one of your chaperones, so.
You'll be running with me.
Any further discussion?
Just a motion, just a, just a matter of motion.
Yeah, just amend the motion based on, did you guys fill out?
The bottom.
No.
That's your job.
Basically, if it's on the out-of-state travel policy request.
And I'm sure Mr. Mack knows everything.
Yeah.
And it's second by Ms. Swope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have one abstention.
Thank you.
Moving on with the meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 18th, 2018 meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Mr. Fabiano. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it? Moving on, we have a number of warrants this evening. I'd like to make a motion in favor of warrant SVW 19-1 for $57,590.37. Any discussion? Uh, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it? Uh, we also have warrant SVW 18-23, amount of $262,069.79. Do I have a second on this?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it? Moving on to two payroll warrants. We have five lump sum payroll warrants in the amount of $511,953.30. And payroll warrant dated June 27, 2018, amount of $193,829.64. Do we have a motion to approve those warrants?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell, second by, by Ms. Swope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Standing.
And we have a budget transfer in the amount of $193,829.64. I'll make the motion. And seconded by this...
Second.
Ms. Swope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it? Uh, we do have a few buildings and grounds requests. We have the WHS girls soccer cow wash, the WHS class of 2020 cow wash, the WHS girls volleyball cow wash, and the William P. Fort Banks PTO kindergarten social. Uh, I believe we can approve all the cow wash requests once. Okay.
Motion to approve all of the grounds requests.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Mr. Fabiano. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it? Subcommittee reports. Mr. Matucci, please report the questions.
Uh, Mr. Fabiano?
So, we have any other questions?
So, okay, we had a budget subcommittee meeting, uh, I think it was June 25th?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. So, we had a budget, and at that meeting, we talked about the reductions that were made due to the appropriation to the town, to the school department, the town. And there were no votes taken at the meeting. And we talked about maybe some ideas of trying to figure out who would be better to cut different lines or move money into the lines. But it seems to, that the consensus of the meeting was to keep everything the way it was, that was recommended, you know, work done by the administrators. And that was pretty much it. So it was only one line, I don't think.
Mr. Fabiano, do you have a problem with the athletic subcommittee?
Yep, so we had a athletic subcommittee meeting tonight at 5:00. Myself, Gus, Suzanne, Brian were there, and, and, and Matt Torino was there as well. So what we discussed was the possibility of having advertising signage at Noah Field like we did in the past before the field was done over. So we were just discussing who would handle that, that process. And we talked, felt Viking Pride did it in the past, and now we felt comfortable with having them do it in the future. We don't know exactly when we're going to do it. We have to wait for the next lease and once the field is turned over to us officially. So Viking Pride, Benny Crossman, is going to bring it back to his board and try to, as long as they're comfortable with it, they're going to start the process and have everything ready to go for whenever we say it's okay, and then they'll start the process. As long as the rest of the community is comfortable Viking Pride handling it, they'll handle it.
Everybody comfortable with that? We don't have that in our vote, or do you think? Any discussion down there, anybody?
So they, so is it based on setting particular rates?
So they set the rate the last time. I would imagine this year, this time around will be a little different prior to all money. But they do set the rate. We could give them a recommendation of what kind of size you want on the signs, if you want certain designs on it, things like that. We could certainly send that to Viking Pride. I'm sure they will respect that decision on that.
But Viking Pride, Viking proposed and submitted to the school committee prior to, you know, putting up any signs or trying to put any signs. So we'll see everything before that, that actually has happened. Because it hasn't been approved by the school.
And do the proceeds go to Viking Pride or do they go to the town?
They go to Viking Pride. But we feel it's basically the same thing because Viking Pride ends up sending it back to us anyway.
Supporting us, yes, yes.
It will make it a little bit easier on the school department, one less thing that they have to handle. Viking Pride has experience handling it, and we feel it will be seamless for them to do it. And in return, you know, get the money either way.
So just so I'm clear, they're gonna, Viking Pride is going to put together a process, what the cost will be, what the signage will be, and how it's going to be handled and how it's going to be transferred over before we make any decision. So we're just, we're not actually voting on it tonight.
No, we're just kind of giving them the okay to start their process, to get their information together. Because we're going back and forth whether it's going to go to the athletic director or back to Viking Pride. And we kind of felt comfortable with sending it back to Viking Pride, you know, and let them handle it. So we're just giving them approval and start the process of coming up with a plan.
Great idea.
I think that makes sense. That's, there's a lot of legwork involved, I would imagine, in...
Renting, collecting.
Yeah.
And they've done in the past, and they're, they know.
And they're very transparent as far as their finances.
Um, the other thing that we talked about was the long-term planning of the buses. The athletic, obviously, we don't have the in-town run anymore, but we're still, this year, we're renting out Haley for the athletics. So we're trying to come up with a long-term plan with Viking Pride of finding ways to save money. So what we did was, we took a vote on surplus in the buses, so that the town can then surplus the buses, and then that money can go back to Viking Pride, and then Viking Pride will take a vote amongst their board and see if they'd be willing to then possibly purchase some vans and replace those buses. So for athletics going forward, in the future, some of the smaller sports we could then put on vans and save the money of possibly $600 a run that we are renting for Haley. So we're trying to make it, make it a way to save money on athletics by utilizing the money, surplus in the buses, using that money to possibly buy some vans to save that money. So we did take a vote, 3-0, to approve surplus in the vans, having the town surplus the vans.
And the only other thing, Jen, that Eric was bad is that they wanted us to come up with a plan so they would know if this is going to make sense for their financial purposes.
Correct.
So how many people, how many runs would they actually be doing, and what would it save us? So what's the difference between having the buses and, or having the vans?
So Matt Torino is going to go back through his notes and get all that information, and then he's going to present to Viking Pride and to us, saying, okay, we'd be able to save this many runs by having those vans, so it's worth us buying those vans because we'll save X amount of money. Obviously, if there's no savings, it's not worth it. We'll just continue with Haley. But I'd be surprised if there wouldn't be a decent amount of savings by going more towards vans as much as possible. So we did take that vote through 3-0, surplus in vans. The buses are choosing, so we have, have to make a vote in the vote. If you'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make the motion to approve surplus on the, prove, to tell the town to surplus the buses? How do we work that?
No, we're going to do it.
Turn it back.
Yeah, we're going to take, we're going to vote to have the superintendent, we're going to surplus the buses, and have the superintendent write a letter to the town saying that we've surplus the buses, and for them to turn it back over to Viking.
We surplus them?
We have to be, for example.
Motion by Mr. Fabiano?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci, do we have any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Hames, you please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes. Six on the affirmative, zero on the negative. The ayes have it. Moving on, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a few things tonight. I'll start with some budget items. It appears we've been working diligently on a close for the FY18 budget. Susan and I have spent endless amounts of time together reviewing end-of-the-year purchase orders, things that needed to be closed. We saw lots of transfers in tonight's budget, I'm sorry, in tonight's meeting, and those transfers were done to accomplish the closing out of the FY18 budget. I am happy to report, and still fingers crossed and holding on to the word, that we will, we anticipate that we will come in at budget and not above, so not over budget, which, with the amount of work that's been done with the principals, the assistant principals, the curriculum folks in the district, with school secretaries, athletics did an excellent job this year at keeping their budget tight, but without the support, understanding, and paying attention to the budget of all those people involved, as well as the understanding and patience of the teaching staff. When we put a freeze on the budget in November 1st, I received nothing but support, both verbally and in paying attention to not sending purchase orders over that we couldn't pay for. That the teachers understood what we were doing, and understood the urgent need to really close that budget down to make sure that we did not come in over budget as we closed this year's, this year's FY18 school budget. So I am happy to report that as of next school committee meeting, I believe we will have that finalized, and we will be in at budget, which is huge. So I can't thank the people that I work with enough, occasions of the families and teachers, really at the top of that list, because there was no complaining, yet lots of understanding and support. That being said, we also have our capital improvement money that was approved by the town has become available, so that we can purchase the Chromebooks that we asked for, as well as the Bobcat. We're doing some research in the community, because I've been made aware that there is a company in town that may be closing, a landscaping company that may have some availability of a Bobcat or two. So I would like Mikhail and Rich Safini to take a look at that, to see if that's the best place to go in terms of purchasing one and maybe getting two, depending upon the age. But I really would need experts in that field to check that out prior to doing that. But that money has become available. Our technology guys, Geo and Petro, are working on getting the quotes so that we can order the Chromebooks. There's a long process that goes along. It's not, you don't, just don't order them and they deliver them and they're all set to go. They have to be at the company the way we order them. They come tagged with the support systems that we need on them for safety and security of the internet, but also in the, in the types of programs that we need on the Chromebooks themselves. And they come with our ability to keep them tracked, so that we can keep our inventory up and running, and we know where they are. So we're hoping to get those quotes this week and be able to order them so that they're here in a timely fashion, so we can distribute those. The principals had asked for them upfront, so I know where they need to be based on the information they gave me about aging out Chromebooks, about new students coming in. And so our goal is, is to replenish the supply that we have, if there's anything that's broken and irreparable, but also to continue to beef up at the lower elementary levels and at the middle, middle school level, the supply that we have. So high school is one-to-one, so nine through 12, all students have a Chromebook in hand and are able to take them home. Middle school is class set, so they use them within the school. And they are pretty, pretty well off in terms of how many they have. They needed one Chromebook cart, which would be a rolling cart, to help support the specialists, but the other classrooms have the available carts. They also needed a few extras to replace some of them in the carts that are in the classrooms. And the Athletee Cummings School, it was looking for four carts. There's 27 Chromebooks on a cart, and the cart recharges them and, and is able to be pushed from classroom to classroom. So four additional carts would even out each floor, and giving each floor, I believe, three to four carts per floor. So they're still sharing at that level. And at the Gorman Fort Bank School, they have, they're going to receive 100 Chromebooks, and that would help second grade, and also help pilot an online math program that we're moving towards since Ten Marks, which is one of our online programs, has now, the company itself has now diminished. They're gone. So they dissolved, actually. So they didn't have the support of, enough support to keep their company up and running, and I'm assuming they had some other extenuating circumstances. So they've spent a year looking at different programs and beyond. So having the Chromebook for grade two will be extremely helpful. Cap, I did capital improvements for Kids Only, rent space from us, as, as you all know, at the Gorman Fort Bank School. So I have an MOU in hand from the Kids Only that we have changed it up a little bit. They were asking for additional space, additional classroom space. With additional space comes the need for additional support for custodial work. So we're working on the language of that with Paul Hodnett, who's our school attorney, making sure that MOU is, is tight, and making sure that what we are expecting for a cost from the Kids Only will cover the custodial piece, as well as the use of electricity, heat, so taking all those things into account. The Kids Only is also opening up another program, which will, they've purchased a home on, on Winthrop Street, close by here. So we're in even deeper conversations with the Kids Only about how to continue to have them utilize the school as well. We like the relationship we have with them. We like that we are able to keep our kids under our roof beyond the school day. And we've also had some great benefit from the Kids Only in terms of utilizing some of their supplies. They received a $35,000 grant for supplies this year. And because we are supplying an extra room, the supplies from the grant will stay on-site, and our teaching staff will be able to use those supplies as well during the day. And they're not consumables, so they're things that, part of the MOU will state that they're going to be co-sharing those. They're also going to be providing us with some support, social-emotional learning coach that's part of the Kids Only. We're going to be able to benefit from some hours, of some hours from that individual. So, you know, although we're charging them rent, it behooves us to keep them in our house. They are our students. And the program that's going to be across the street is going to be for older students, so believe coming school-age students. So I'm happy to report that that's in the works. You'll get a copy of that MOU for your approval, for your review, once it is completed. And just on to curriculum, again, just a few items today. Laurie Gallivan has, and I provided you with a copy of her resume, I believe, in your packet. Did you receive that? Oh, no, did I not give you that? So I will pass that on to you. I thought that that got into your packet. That's probably a mistake. Laurie has been appointed the curriculum, executive director of curriculum, instruction, and accountability, as you know. I want you to take a look at her resume so that you can see her 10 years of leadership experience. She's a NISL graduate, which many of us in leadership are. She is part of the Educational Leadership Licenseur Program out of Gordon College. She has a master's in education from Cambridge College and a bachelor of arts in liberal studies from Westfield State. She has spent the last six years as the executive director of curriculum instruction and accountability in Saugus Public Schools, where she provided oversight in obviously all things that mirror curriculum instruction and assessment, but also worked on developing walkthrough programs, completed full implementation of the new teacher evaluation, oversaw teacher evaluation and certification, 504 coordinator, ELL 3 coordinator, ELL director, Title I, Title II, and Title II-A director, district mentor, mentee coordinator, did budget development, oversaw the MTSS process within the school district, and oversaw district enrollment and the balancing of class size and accountability whenever possible. Her background, I think, of being a principal and an assistant principal, a classroom teacher, an alternative program teacher in the past in communities like Newbury, Porton, Lynn, have given her a wide array of experience and set her up to be what I would consider the type of team member that we're looking for. Somebody who's collaborative, somebody who's willing to come in and roll their sleeves up and not ask people to do anything that she would not otherwise do. Somebody who's positive, somebody who understands what it's like to be in the classroom. So Laurie has been here since July 1st. She has an, an office, which is a classroom space over at the Cummings School. We looked at the entire school to see what would be the most appropriate office space for her. Certainly, the town hall is not one of the spaces we considered, because she needs to be in with teachers and working in classrooms. Choosing the Cummings School, I think, will be helpful to support Nora, as well as the amount of curriculum development that has gone on in that building in the last few years, I think will be important for Laurie to get a handle on. So she will be at our next school committee meeting, and she'll also be at an upcoming subcommittee meeting that's just prior, curriculum subcommittee meeting, just prior to that meeting. She attended, just to jump around a little bit, the MAS, Mass Association of School Superintendent's Conference down the Cape this week, which is comprised of superintendents, assistant superintendents, and curriculum directors, and some business managers. So she came to that. Lots of good information, lots of good networking. We also got the opportunity to hear from the new commissioner, Jeff Riley. And he was, it was actually a breath of fresh air to hear somebody, again, somebody who's been in the classroom, someone who's been an assistant principal, a principal, and a director, somebody who really understands public education, speak out and talk about the need to take a deep breath, and for schools to be able to just slow it down a notch, and be able to focus in on what's going on outside the walls of the school, and take it, take a little bit of that in, and look at the social-emotional well-being of our kids. There is, he also alerted us to some monies that may be coming available at the state level for security, safety of students, really social-emotional support, as well as safety and security. So that was exciting news. The general gist of the superintendents, who can be, you know, I've only been a superintendent now for a little over a year, but sort of an odd group of people that like to sit in halls and listen to people talk. But listening to this guy talk, he received a standing ovation. I've never seen that with a commissioner in a long time. I've been to many meetings where the commissioner has spoken, but this guy seems to be really down-to-earth. You know, hopefully he can, he can rise to the occasion of, it's a very important position, but he seems to be very supportive of superintendents in, in public school, which is... but he seems to be very supportive of superintendents in, in public school, which is key. In terms of facilities, quick update, Miller Field, as you know, is open slash closed for public use as the track has been painted. Is, the process of being painted, we opened it up, we closed it down for a little bit, we'll open it up again. For those of you who got to take a walk around it, I'm sure you enjoyed it. Hopefully, we'll have it open again, potentially by Thursday, correct? I think that's what Basili, Basili left, but potentially by, either, if not this weekend, by early next week. OSHA training is happening this summer for the custodians, so there's been some, some new mandates that have come down, and Michael, who is our director of facilities, has set that up, and our staff will be, for the first time in a while, trained in safety and protocols, so we're excited to announce that. Frank Needy, who works for the town and does lots of work with energy and electricity, would like to attend the August 20th school committee meeting to discuss a proposal for solar panels, and it's a revisit of something he came in on last year right about this time.
Can I just talk to you there? I just want to make sure that whatever we do, we have the attorney ready to kind of stand by and read that because I, I caught a bunch of things the last time around. I just want to make sure that we get it, if we get the contractor's proposal before you, and I just...
Sure, we'll get that ahead of time and perhaps send it to Paul.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy for all the students when they take a look at it. So we'll be a little ahead of it when he comes in.
Perfect. I'll begin negotiations this week with, actually, next week with ESPs and nurses through the teachers' union, so we have to settle the rest of the contracts for the other six unions. So I anticipate that to go pretty smoothly, probably on the same pattern as we did with the teachers in terms of, you know, what they're looking for, length of a contract. So that begins next week, I can keep you updated on that. And just some random things, all the improvement plans, school improvement plans have been collected by the teachers, I'm sorry, but from the principals, by, by me. August 23rd, 4th, and 5th, I will be entering leadership conference with principals, assistant principals, ETLs, athletic director, and pupil personnel director and curriculum director. Our, our mission is to spend three days working on the development of the strategic plan. We're a fair way through the development of it, we're now at the point where we're identifying the strategic objectives, and then how those strategic objectives are going to fit in with the school improvement plans. We will also be identifying a district-wide vision and a district-wide set of core values over those three days. We'll have an additional day in August for those people who like to do the technical stuff when you put a bunch of principals in a room, to talk about technical things like first-day school stuff, lockdown procedures, what is it going to look like, you know, on the first day with your new teachers. So all those little technical things we'll do on another day. Eventually, when the strategic plan is done, which my hope is would be before the end of August, that first school committee meeting in September, I'll be bringing the strategic plan to the committee for your review and presentation by the principals and myself. And the last thing, I also had a great meeting with the Winter Band Parents Association, so certainly there are people who are concerned and frustrated with the idea that we had to make some cuts to the school's budget this year, of $425,000 worth of reductions, and instrumental band at the elementary school level was eliminated as part of those cuts. I've spoken to a number of, of parents, they brought some great ideas to the table, sharing those ideas with Matt Crombie and Brian Curley and some of the folks that run bands within the school system, just to kind of strategize, are there any other way we can get instrumental band or keep instrumental band within the school? So we're looking at a whole bunch of different things. They had some great questions, some of which I could answer and some of which I couldn't. I was honest about those that I couldn't, but did assure them that I would do the research with the principals to see what we could, you know, what we could do and what type of plan we could come up with. They have donated money to the school district in the past, and so, you know, that was certainly something that I was not, not aware of. So because of that, maybe looking at how that might be utilized differently next year, and then just some more long-term planning, making sure that we keep band and music, you know, right, right up there with the rest of the extracurricular activities we do with our students.
Thank you for meeting with the parents.
Yeah.
I, I knew there was a big outcry, and it was nice for them to be able to have that outlet.
One, one of the things I learned, and, and, you know, as the strategic plan will unravel, you'll see that communication with parents and communication in general with the community is something that I believe strongly in the school district taking on as a mission in order to get that done, and making sure people aren't out there making assumptions about what it is that we do. Teachers are so ingrained in their work every day that we spend a lot of time within our buildings. So strategizing on how we can get outside of our buildings to bring all the good that we do out to the community so that people can see what it is that we do. And having those meetings and sitting around a table with parents in a, in a good way, in a strategic way, not in a way that's, you know, of course, everybody comes in and they want to first start to, to complain and to be upset, and you have to allow them to do that. But then when you start strategizing with them about how we can work to get this accomplished together, it's helpful. And one of the things I was, I was talking to Jen about today is, you know, there are certain, I don't know what parents don't know. So it's, sometimes it's difficult to say, oh, we're going to make sure parents have a full awareness of everything. I think we've improved greatly. Patty manages our Facebook page. If it wasn't for Patty, everybody knows my social media skills are weak, to say the least. Patty manages that page and runs it all through me. Without that, without that outreach, I think we'd be in trouble. We're working on a lot more around our website and improving our website. Another area that we have some people consulting on to help us make sure that that's parent-friendly. Working on surveys to get out to parents to get more feedback as to what it is that they would like to see more of. So I know that was for me, a long superintendent's report, but...
Did we figure out who's going to replace Nora at the Fort Banks?
So we'll know tomorrow.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking at an internal candidate, so moving somebody from within the classroom to, obviously because it's an interim position, so at the end of the school year, Nora decides that she, this is not a good fit for her or otherwise, she can, she has the right to go back to her position. So that person would have to, coming into the position, understand that either you were only here for a year and you might not have a job at the end, or an internal person who could go back to the classroom. So working with Eileen and Nora, they have identified somebody who's, who's willing to do that, and tomorrow I'll be meeting with that person and, as well as Eileen, to work out a schedule to see if it can be done. Just for general information, it's a cost savings in the district when you do that, which is another strategy, because if a classroom teacher comes in to that position and you replace that classroom teacher, classroom teacher coming into an AP position typically is going to be one of your highest-paid, longer-standing teachers. And moving in to cover that position, certainly we would not go for the lowest salary we could find, most qualified person that fits the role, but typically that's not, not somebody who's looking to move into winter for one year at, you know, eighty-two thousand or somewhat. So, so you're looking at a little bit of savings, and that money would go back, in my opinion, go back into the, to the Fort Banks School, but I would bring that to the community. And that is all I have.
Lisa, where do we know about the time? The time that we're going to be meeting with the nurses and the...
So they all have a, so the subcommittee, I sent an email today.
I know, I got it.
Paul Hodnett, who sits in on and does the negotiations, asked me to find out from the committee what your availability is. He'll give me his availability, and I have a meeting with the union president tomorrow at four to give her those options, and then as soon as, as soon as we know, I'll make sure everybody has that information out.
And is there any, will we be meeting before the meeting as a group?
Probably, I would assume the attorney would ask us to come in probably for 15, maybe half-hour meeting. Just to see if there are any strategies.
Any personnel?
Yes, so personnel, jump to my next paper. So resignations, Erin Kalishman, grade four teacher, and I, this year I instituted exit surveys trying to find out why folks who are leaving us, part of that whole communication bandwagon that I'm on. Erin is leaving us to be closer to home, she has had another child and, and would like not to have to travel so far, so she took a position much closer to her community. Billy McGee is leaving us, he's an ESP, his wife is retiring, and so Billy is going to join her on shore down the Cape for a number of days. Suzanne Dunn was an English teacher at Winter Middle School in seventh grade, and she has received a position as director of curriculum in another school district, and she is well-suited for that position, and we're very happy for her. Terms of retirements, as of this time, we have none. Postings, we have all of our stipend positions at the Winthrop Middle School, which is usual and customary to get those posted. The seventh-grade ELA teacher at the middle school, which got, put on there twice, is really only one, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then preschool, preschool special ed teacher at the William P. Gorman, grade five teacher at the Arthur T. Cummings, a grade four teacher at the Arthur T. Cummings, the academic support and computer teacher, which was replacing a retirement at the Arthur T. Cummings, the secretarial position at the high school was a half-time position that was increased in the budget to a full-time position. All of the spring coaching positions at, at Winthrop High School have been posted. A grade one teacher at the Gorman School, a math teacher at the Winthrop Middle School, an ESP at Winthrop High School, a long-term substitute for grade two at the Gorman, algebra one summer school teacher for the high school, ELA grade nine summer school teacher for the high school, Winthrop High School long-term sub for history, Winthrop High School special ed teacher, a Winthrop High School phys ed and health teacher, a Winthrop High School, hmm, oh, I'm sorry, yep. And, and then the, a pre-K teacher at the Gorman in ELL, part-time teacher at the Gorman. So those are positions, it sounds like we're just doing a lot at once. Those are all the positions since the end of the school year that we've had to post and, and fill. So just letting you know that, those are all of those. And in terms of leave of absence, at this time, we have none. And your new business got pulled forward because I took it off the agenda.
Any public comments, additional public comments? Public relations, Mr. Matucci? I would just quickly like to thank all those involved in making public hours at Noah Field a reality. I know everyone put a lot of hard work into that. And also, I'd like to congratulate the new town manager, I look forward to having him at one of these meetings. Mr. Perrin?
Nothing for me.
Nothing at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci, all in favor. Opposed, the eyes have it.